How's it going? Can everybody hear me? Yep, I can hear myself echoing.
Yes.
Alright, I'll call the work session to order. First thing on the agenda is CARES Act funding. Yeah, we can do that. Linda, will you call roll?
Alderman Yulidall.
Here.
Alderman Chevalier.
Present.
Alderman Sarver.
You're.
Alderman Atkins.
Here.
Alderman Blomker.
Yeah.
All here but Alderman Wilson.
Alderwoman Wilson is excused. So CARES Act funding Cynthia, I'll hand it over.
Very good. Um, we've provided some information in the form of an update on the CARES Act expenditures to date and are looking for direction from the board for movement forward in utilization of additional funds. As the board will recall, we received just over $945,000 in CARES funding. We, in June, reviewed with the board and there were a number of items recommended for purchase or bid. There is a spreadsheet included in the packet that outlines expenditures or those items which are on the agenda for this evening, recommended for expenditure, approximately $320,000 in expenditures. Currently, we have between the June meeting and tonight's meeting, we will bring reimbursement to ourselves for mitigation supplies, whether that's purchase of PPE, cleaning supplies, equipment to facilitate remote work for staff, and reimbursement of expenditures for legal review. For June, basically everything from March through June totals $28,000. At the last board meeting, you all approved grants for small businesses. The grants were in the amount of $5,000 each. We awarded 21 grants. And with the administrative fee for administration of that grant process, we have expended a total of just over $110,000. One of the things we'd like for direction from the board this evening is if you would like to consider another round of grant financing or not.
You back on mute, so that's good. Okay.
Yep.
I talked to a couple of folks about the date that we used. It was the day that business tax returns and personal tax returns were due. So a lot of people didn't have time to get the application in. So there is a... There are some businesses in town that have asked if we were going to open it again. So we would have additional applications. And given the timing, I think we have time to do it. I think we had originally discussed during the second round. So I'll open up to the board to discuss.
Do we have any idea how many we would expect to possibly see?
Probably another dozen, at least.
I think it's the, probably the most effective use of those dollars that we can have at this point. And I know it's been very well welcomed by those businesses and helped them out in a very difficult period. So I'm very supportive of looking at another round.
Yeah, I think if we did another 100K and if we get more, we talk again. Does that work for everybody? Anybody opposed to that? Steve's good. Sarver, Alderman Sarver's good. Alderman Yulidall's shaking his head, yes. Thumbs up from Mr. Atkins there. Kind of a little fuzzy, but I can still see him.
Is 5,000 kind of what our peer cities have done as well?
Yes, it is. North Kansas City had done one round of funding and they did $5,000 grants. And I believe, Nikki, correct me, it was Carney, wasn't it, that did a round as well? Or was it Gladstone looking at it and they were at the $5,000 amount as well? Is that correct?
I know 5,000 was their cap and I think, I just, I'm not sure how many of them allowed applicants to scale down. But everyone's right at that $5,000 mark.
And currently, it's Carney and North Kansas City that have done projects. Gladstone is reviewing, correct? Okay. So we can, we'll look at, and we'll work with Clay County EDC for reviewing that process again and will include a 5% administrative fee again for that process?
Yep.
Okay. The next three items really are expenditures, one that's been approved. Touchless fixtures for restrooms throughout City Hall, the kitchen facility here at City Hall. Touchless water fountains. Funding totaled $107,000 of CARES funds. That contract, you all will recall, was approved at the last board meeting. And in working with the contractor on that, so long as all of their materials are delivered in a timely manner, they anticipate installation in all facilities by September 1st. On this evening's agenda, we have two items. One for technology in Heritage Park to allow for the live streaming of ballgames there. That contract totals slightly over $30,000. And if approved tonight, installation is anticipated. It can be complete by September 29th. Then upgrades to the meeting room here at City Hall to improve the audio and visual quality for remote access, but then also access within the meeting room. That award of bid is included in tonight's packet. CARES funding for that item totals almost $43,000. As outlined in the memo here and in the bid, or excuse me, the RFA for the meeting tonight, the bid submitted by the contractor did include an instant or live polling module that this firm provides in a lot of their projects. At this point in time, staff does not recommend purchase of that module. I think there are ways that we can address that through app or some other way. We saw it work very well through the comp plan process last week in a very inexpensive way. So we don't recommend that module. If that contract is approved tonight, again, pending equipment delivery and timing on that, we anticipate that project to be complete September 10th. So those are the expenditures that we've had to date. Moving forward, based on discussions that we've had with the board and other needs that we have seen arise, some of the areas that staff sees as potential for expenditure would be the potential of revenue replacement. Currently, CARES Act does not outline, and appropriate spending is not indicated as replacement of lost revenues. However, ongoing discussion of another round of funding or amendment to the CARES Act could potentially include revenue replacement. So staff recommends that we kind of continue to identify some portion of funding to address the lost revenue, particularly from our campground revenues, municipal court interest. Building permits might be a little more difficult to identify strictly as COVID-related, although we have seen reductions in numbers. But we believe eligible expenditures for that, should it become an eligible amount, would be somewhere between potentially $50,000 to $80,000. Rental assistance grants, at the last meeting and last discussions we had, there was some question by the board with regard to providing some type of utility or rental assistance to residents. The cities of North Kansas City and Kansas City both have announced grant funds to residents to provide assistance for rental or utility assistance. In review of the CARES Act, we are confident that that is an authorized expenditure. And we have, based on contact with North Kansas City, reached out to the Northland Assistance Center, who is the group that's providing them assistance and administration of that contract, similar to what occurred with the small business grants. And they have indicated an ability to administer a program for Smithville. And we could outline what we would be looking at there. If this is something that the board wants to proceed with, staff can reach out and negotiate a contract with them. We could identify a funding level that would include caps for individuals, probably a 5% administrative fee, similar to what North Kansas City has done and what we've done for the Economic Development Assistance. We do look for direction in that area, if you do want to proceed in that, and what expenditures. One thing in conversations I had with Callaway County, and I don't believe they're doing this in North Kansas City. In North Kansas City, there's, there are funds available for rental assistance for utilities that would include gas, water, electric. When I spoke with Callaway County, they included internet service providers as well. And with remote school access and the like, we thought that might be something we should consider. We did reach out and that is something that the Northland Assistance Center could provide. And this would basically, our thought is we would provide them funds. They would administer those and report that to us. That way, the city wouldn't be involved in that review. I don't know if you want to discuss that or me keep moving through the other opportunities. To hold that kind of...
80,000 on the revenue replacement. On the assistance fund, North Kansas City has a lot more renters than we do, a lot more population. I think 10 would be funny, maybe even 7,500, but we could throw out 10 and see how that...
And as rental assistance or rental slash utility assistance?
Rental slash utility. I think internet, especially since kids will be home.
Okay, with, okay.
I think internet would be important. They may be going to school.
I would, I'd be more open to leaning hard.
You're all muted right now.
I would like to see, you know, yeah, that one. Go for it, Alderman Sarver.
I just didn't hear the last thing. I think John was muted. Whoever was talking, I didn't hear it.
That was, that was Jeff.
That was me, sorry about that. I, my comment was I would like to see us lean a little bit harder towards internet assistance. You know, I think that's a service that many of our youth may need and would be, would be something that we could directly benefit the community.
I definitely agree with that. That may be the way they're going to school.
I also like the idea of the utility assistance, knowing that they can help screen to ensure that these are folks who are truly in need and they've, knowing they've got to, they've got to show a good bit in order to be able to get some assistance and not just turn in that they have a water bill they'd like paid.
And one question we would have also, would we make that eligible for assistance back to March? Can I make that retroactive or going forward or?
What have the other communities done?
It's my understanding, and Nikki, correct me if I'm wrong, that they're retroactive assistance beginning in March.
You know, we didn't ask that specific question, but I know people have to show a copy of their past due rent or utility. So I guess I would assume that past due amount could go back to March because that's when CARES funding went into effect.
So do we want to start with 10 and then kind of like the first round of small business grants? If we need to do a second, we can review it at that point?
Well, with the timing that we have.
Well, couldn't go until the next agenda, right?
Up to 25?
I think that would provide us some flexibility where we are now in order to get something. Nikki, do we think we can get something negotiated and on the agenda for the 18th so then they can put that together?
Yeah, I mean, we, I spoke with the Northland Assistance Administrator, the executive director, and she said that she was super flexible, more than happy to do it. And especially if it generally models what she's already got going on in North Kansas City, she wouldn't have any problem. She was even willing to come on tonight's meeting and answer questions if we needed her to. So she sounded very ready to help people and pretty flexible.
And because they've worked with North Kansas City, they've got a process going. I think we can, much like EDC, really hit it quickly, publicize it and get that process going. So I heard 25,000, so that we kind of hit it once and...
Yeah, that's what the administrative fee, 25 with the administrative. So that gives you guys 80 budgeted towards revenue, 25 there, 105 again for the small business, so we're 210 total. What about you, part-time Dan? Is that? 210?
Then the...
I only have two weeks left.
Oh no, we still have a cell phone number.
Then the next item would be HVAC improvements to city facilities. And at the last meeting, we discussed some type of possibility of air filtration. And this is not an area where staff has a lot of expertise. So we did reach out to Metro HVAC. There's information included in the packet and I believe we have a representative, Tyler, is that correct? No, sorry. Kyle?
My name's Keith Volkman. I'm with Metro Air. And I brought a partner, the company we partnered with is Midwest Mechanical and his name's Tyler. Essentially, my role is a, as a mechanical contractor. I work with the labor in the installation and the bidding process with you guys directly. And we partnered with Tyler as far as the technologies that we thought would best fit the application you guys have. So yeah, we came on tonight. We're going to answer any questions you guys have. We can go into detail about what we suggested for your HVAC systems in your City Hall, your senior center, and your public bathroom. I believe there's interest as well in maybe a police station and a wastewater plant. But no, we're here to kind of provide clarity as far as what we are proposing. It's kind of a, it's a well-established technology, but it's being reapplied a lot more broadly now amongst COVID-19. But essentially, it's a variety of UV light applications that sanitize the air. Specifically, we install where the application's correct into your ductwork. We'll go right in and put those lights there. We also have other applications that we can put in an open space, like what we proposed for your senior center that cycles air as it goes in and out of your return air duct in the space itself. But anyways, I understand that you probably have more questions than anything else about what I just threw at you, but we're here to kind of provide clarity on that.
Up, anyone have any questions? Alderman Atkins, go.
Got a question. Do we have any kind of a substantial proof that this technology actually is needed at this time?
Sure. I'll pass the ball to Tyler. He's well spoken on the technology. It's been used in hospitals for decades, since the 80s. But since everything's gone on this year, it's being reapplied in more general public areas. But anyways, I'll stop talking. Tyler, I'll let you run with it.
Hey, this is Tyler Stroud with Mechanical Sales Midwest. So the best way I can answer that is when this whole pandemic began, I know for me, in my life, a lot of people were rushing to buy hand sanitizer and try and disinfect surfaces. And since then, you know, the information's evolved where the CDC, ASHRAE, IES, different groups have come back and said that the virus is being spread through aerosols. So that's through the air and they're even finding situations where it is transmitted through the HVAC system in buildings. So we've been working hard here in the Kansas City area with individuals and groups like yourself to determine the best possible approach. You know, this is something that has been around for a long time, has a track record of effectiveness against various strains of known coronaviruses. So we know it is effective in killing this virus. And we've actually provided a number of different solutions based on best fit for the buildings that we walked through back in June to give you the best solution, most cost-effective solution to keeping your occupants safe.
Thank you, Tyler.
Where'd Chuck go?
That scared. There he is. Hey Tyler, I run a 250,000 square foot warehouse. We have one small UV scrubber that we use in our coolers and freezers. It does work in that area. It just, I just haven't seen anywhere, and I'm monitoring COVID all the time. I just haven't seen where the CDC or anybody has been really saying, yes, this is definitely an issue with airborne, you know, circulation that we're getting the virus. It could be out there. We don't know. Yes, it does kill viruses. But I don't know where at that point, are we at that point where it's mandatory now or it's in our best interest? It may not be for Tyler, but it could be for the board. This is something we need to approach right now. I don't have that answer.
Yeah, looking at our original bid for HVAC, this is a fraction of it, right? Originally, we're looking at hundreds of thousands. And Chuck could probably answer this. That's why I was asking where he went. I think we use UV at our sewer plant for treatment as well, right? So we know it's a tried and true methodology.
Correct. Yeah, we have UV disinfection at the wastewater plant.
And how long have we had it there?
I'm not sure here, but I'm familiar with it. In Wellington and Emporia, we had UV disinfection there. And they had some in Lawrence, so it's been around for a while.
So my recommendation on this is we keep this as a shovel-ready plan that we have that as we kind of start to expend our funds and frankly, based on some of the conversations we've had over the past 48 hours with folks coming forward with needs, that we assess this as we assess those other projects, decide where these funds are best spent. You know, these are tax dollars that we're protecting and we need to use them where the best makes sense. And so I think this is a great project to keep on the list and review down the road. That if it, if this is on the list that makes the most sense, then we review it at that time. But I think if we review the other things, I think we need to take them in order and rank and prioritize what we need to do.
Okay, let's see where we sit on the 18th, once we get more projects under. Tyler and...
Keith.
Matt, who else was there? Sorry. Keith, appreciate you guys providing info. Thanks for coming out and looking at this. This number's a lot easier to swallow than the original HVAC.
Sure, yeah. And it's, you know, I wish I could give you an exact estimate on what every building would be, but it's kind of unique to the setup and whatnot. But if you guys have any interest and you want to learn more about it or even just have it quoted out so you understand what the scope of your projects are, just a phone call away, I can come out and take a look at whatever you need to.
Okay, so we're good up to that point. What was the next ones you wanted to talk about, Ms. Wagner?
Well, I have one more in the memo that's included and then a few others that, as Alderman Blomker alluded to, some that have come up in the last couple of days. One other idea of some things that some other communities have been doing is for cities or counties to purchase face masks for distribution and do a distribution program. I know Grandview, Lee Summit, Roland Park have all done that and have basically had a reverse face mask drive. It's distribution of face masks to people who may not have them. So that's something to think about. I did reach out to INRAD and the Smithville Area Fire Protection District to determine, you know, when we initially went through this to see if they had any needs. I've not been able to speak yet to Jason James at INRAD, but did speak with fire chief. And so far, they feel like they are still good from expenditure standpoint, with the exception, they have identified a need for a fogger for cleaning, similar to what we've looked at in-house through Parks and Recreation, probably in the $4,000 to $5,000 range. And I think staff would recommend that we assist the Fire Protection District in that purchase. And again, I would reach out to INRAD and see if there are any similar type things that we could bring those forward to the board as well. So I guess we can talk about that. And then last night, we had some discussion with the school district and they've reached out as well. Probably want to have some discussion on that.
Up to 5,000?
If we could just to...
Alderman Atkins?
I've been looking for portable scrubbers for like the last five months. And first place, they're very hard to find. And the price range right now is close to $6,000 to $7,000 for something portable, yet alone the $100 a gallon bucket of chemicals and stuff. So you may want to be careful not to cut yourself short because these things are in high demand, especially now that schools are opening. You may be long on the list before we get one. It could be out there. I just haven't found them yet.
So when we looked at those for Parks and Rec, was that through a government purchasing program that had them set aside? Or was that just open market?
Hey Mayor, when I looked online, I was doing some research and was kind of looking for portable foggers and found one on Oil Works and Company. And we were able to get it in 10 to 15 days. We got two of them, one for us and one for the campground for about $1,500.
And I have not had, these have been text conversations with Chief Klein. And I think I was muted when I had indicated earlier. Would reach out to him and I think I would request board authorization up to my expenditure level, which is 7,500, which I think probably even given Alderman Atkins' comments, should take care of that for us. And that way, it would allow us to get the ball rolling on being able to get something for them as well. And I don't know if through public safety channels, there are different ways of being able to get that in a more timely process or not, but I can address that with him as well.
I think that's a great way to go. And if you need to come back and ask for more at that point, we can certainly entertain that.
And I will reach out to Chief James also and see what we can find, if there are any needs with regard to INRAD, if the board is good with that. I didn't know if there was any interest in face mask distribution. We've not really spent any time on looking at a program. If that's something the board would like us to look at, we can definitely put something together to bring back.
I like the idea of doing it, but I'd also like to look at some of the other more advanced PPE as well in case we had need in the community outside of just a basic face mask. So, and then sanitizer and disinfecting, you know, look at not just masks. I know the school mentioned they're doing drives and other places. I know Alicia's doing one, a couple others. Show me realty. So do we want to just give you a number of to spend on PPE disinfectant that would be kind of a community pool?
I'm not hearing anything.
It was brilliant, I assure you. So my comment was, I guess, what is the real need? You know, if we, the school talked that there were folks coming out of the woodworks and offering face masks and, you know, plenty of them available. And then if we go and buy hand sanitizer and wipes and things that are truly in hot supply, we're then pulling it out of the market and keeping it in stockpile to distribute that, you know, is there a true need for that? And if there is, I'm open to discussing, but I'm also hesitant to take away from the normal supply chain and have folks sit on it as we saw with, you know, people bidding on ventilators against each other, right? We don't, we don't need to encourage that behavior.
Yeah. I don't know what the need is. I have seen a lot of people are wearing masks. Chief, have you? I, I don't know what the need is. I have seen a lot of people are wearing masks. Chief, have you heard of anyone that said they can't afford it, so they're not wearing it? You guys have had any interactions with the public?
Oh, Chief, do you want to repeat so people can hear? Yeah.
He said so far he hasn't read into the need in the community. So I think we can table this one and, and if somebody comes forward in the next month with a need, we'll revisit it. Does that work? Do we have enough for City Hall or Blaze and Barks?
Yes, yes. Of all PPE supplies and cleaning supplies still at this time. And, and Chief really has kind of taken on the role of, of managing that inventory and ensuring we've got what we need. And, and so far has been able to procure what we've needed and we've not had, had any supply issues today.
All right. So what's left in the
Um, I haven't even been keeping a good tally on that, but, um, so if we're looking a hundred and five, seventy-five hundred, so about hundred and eight, about a hundred and eighty-eight spent there. Um, and another twenty-five, we're looking about Nikki or Dan, I, I'm saying right about two hundred thousand there. Is that what I'm looking at an additional? Um, so about an additional two hundred thousand of six hundred and twenty-five-ish remaining.
So last time we spoke on this, uh, in detail, there's quite a few renovations on the list. Now that this is visualized, will this still work for a meeting room? Or do you guys still think you need a separate conference room or intake room for the department?
I didn't realize I was. Yeah. Can you hear me now? Oh, Linda unmuted me. So, oh, Linda's gonna, all right. Yeah, Linda is the chief unmuter now. Um, we exact, you stole what I was gonna say. Come on. Uh, there's too much in this room. Um, we, uh, we have begun to use this room for meetings and I think it will work effectively for meetings. Um, there is still a need for renovation at some point, but perhaps from a community perspective as, as we discussed last time, that might not be the hottest thing of, of, um, expenditures. We do have information, um, in conversations today and estimated costs to do conference room piece upfront would be about ninety-five thousand dollars, ninety to a hundred thousand dollars. Um, I think probably staff's biggest concern with that is if we start just kind of piecemealing something, we probably need to look at more of a, a project. Um, so we're, go ahead.
You're gonna have a new conference room right next to Nikki's office between Nikki and Lynn.
That's storage. What do you mean? Dan, you're gonna take, Dan, are you really? Are you, are you gonna take this? Um, so I, one of the other things, do you want me to go ahead to school discussion then as well? We talked a little bit last night. Um, uh, you know, we had indicated to the school district last evening. Most of you were in attendance at that meeting that there might be some availability of funding and there were some discussions with, um, Michelle Cradefall. It indicated perhaps some, um, uh, equipment to assist with fine arts. Um, particularly music programs, um, shields and the like for musical instruments. Um, in additional conversation with her today and with Dr. Schutz, there have been identification of some potential other funding. Um, one of the items that was indicated, the school district has been transporting school lunches via bus or transporting lunches throughout and perhaps either reimbursement for that or looking at a way we could fund that going forward. Um, some portion of that perhaps, I think. Um, we discussed last night that the, um, superintendent and I get together once a month, uh, to meet and our monthly meeting is tomorrow. We could go into a little more detail on, on some of that information. Definitely, I think PPE or any, um, equipment that they may need, they're continuing to put together a list uh, like that, that we could potentially bring forward to the board for review. In any instance, on anything for the school, my recommendation would be that, um, they provide us invoices for that equipment or what we've purchased and, and, and we pay in that way rather than just giving them a lump sum amount.
I like the idea of the, the meals program. We also have one at the city that we run through this office, right? Meals on Wheels. Um, are we getting enough volunteers for that or is there an opportunity for us to leverage what they're doing to delivery to also help deliver our meals on wheels? And could we also look at talking to the other educational institutions in town about their need as well and, and trying to form some partnerships on things like this?
I would certainly feel more comfortable tying as much of this funding as we could to things that are true, direct cares act funded activities. Um, even if that means they offset and, you know, move some of their money around, that's a little bit more flexible. Um, so I think that would be my request is, you know, I'd feel more comfortable buying PPE. Um, you know, they talked about the classroom dividers, those things. If, if we could help fund some of that, I'm all for making sure the kids have meals. But I know there's a lot of discussion on what's the most economic way to provide those. And is it a school bus driving around or is it a van? And I think, you know, us staying out of that discussion and staying pretty clear with these dollars on closer to what it's aligned for, I think would be my preference.
Can we obtain a list from the school of what they're needing and see what actually fits into the act of our part?
And, and that's what I, I anticipate out of discussion with, uh, Dr. Schutz tomorrow, Mark, um, would be uh, them, and the conversation I had with them today was if you can come up with those, list of those type of items and dollar figures, that's something that I could bring forward and that we absolutely could look at again on the eighteenth if that would work.
Uh, one of the other things I'd like to look at, it's not school related, but, um, once we shut down the campground, if we're going to use the campground over the winter for people that would have to quarantine is, you know, if it turns like the other fluid, the rate goes up in the winter time again. So we might want to look at what's it gonna cost to keep the campground semi-staff throughout the winter time as well. I'm gonna open it up to the rest of the board and staff for other recommendations of what we haven't thought about yet. Dan, you're in the hot seat first, since you don't have a sign behind your head.
I mean, uh, quite honestly, we staff met a long time ago and, uh, I think you've heard most of staff's ideas. So we can keep talking.
Chuck, you got anything?
I could probably spend all the money, but not necessarily, um, have a COVID link.
Alderman Neulidahl, I know you've been making some projects for the school. Do you have any other, uh, things in your mind that you've been noodling for?
Uh, no, I did, uh,
Businesses and
Well, I noticed as a business owner that, uh, gloves are starting to become hard to find or have been um, doubling and tripling in price. My, my glove supplier stopped carrying them completely. So we have to be, uh, aware, um, of a shortage that's, that's coming because of that. Um, the school projects, um, that was a fun project. I, I, I think I could find that was, for people that don't know, I built a couple, um, plexiglass screens that, that fit on um, some of the tables so the kids can look at each other and not necessarily transfer or sneeze across the table. Sneezeguards, I guess you could call them. But, uh, those, those would be interesting and be interesting to find a way to make those much cheaper, much more available for not, not necessarily just the school districts, but for any, anybody or any business that has face-to-face contact with people. Kind of like what they've done at Price Chaper and places like that.
That was your cost on that. I'm just curious.
They averaged out getting everything from Menards and, and Home Depot type places. They were two foot by three foot, um, PVC pipe and plexiglass. They were I think about fifty, sixty dollars apiece.
Not bad.
It took me, it took me about two hours to do it. I've seen a lot more simple designs now, um, where it's just plexiglass. Um, we could do it in any size and you just put the, slide the feet on that are made out of thicker plexiglass. Um, that would make it a lot easier to store. Mine don't come apart. They are um, not really stackable. So it would be easier to do a much simpler design that you could stack and store easier.
I'm buying them from a work perspective and it's a hundred fifty to anywhere from a hundred to a hundred seventy-five bucks.
I know a company that I could probably become a wholesaler or that is local that is making them in Kansas City for much less than that.
Yeah. Alderman server, anything? Or I guess Nikki went off mute first, but
Oh, sorry. I was just gonna say it makes sense maybe to circle back after the HEALS Act. Um, if and when it passes, there could be some surprises in the legis- legislation that, um, we might want to circle back on. So that's the, sorry, that you, that's the, uh, you know, the updated bill that Congress is looking at passing that might, um, change the definition of how it can be spent.
Alderman server? Nothing? Yeah. I mean, yeah, come on, we gotta have something.
I don't have any.
Putting up dividers along all the trails so people can socially distance, truly on the trail. All right, uh, I think that's enough discussion on CARES Act. Just gives a little time to talk about senior center. Who's, who's this one? You? Dan, you're up.
Okay, in your packet, I provided a, a staff report that, um, is also, it's kind of a walkthrough of our contract with the senior center. So I'm not going to go through the staff report in a ton of detail, but it talks about the, how the agreement laid out the cost to renovate the building. It lays out the use that's allowed by the tenant and what items the agreement specifically states that the city pays for. And I do want to point out that there are two items. Um, one that we pay for that we're not obligated to pay for. And that is, um, telephone, internet and television access at the senior center. Um, the contract actually specifically states that the, uh, Smithville Senior Citizens Center, the, the non-for-profit is responsible for those costs, but we actually take on those costs a hundred percent. And then also the agreement lays out that we are to provide janitorial services at the senior center weekly. And we actually provide them three times a week. Um, then the agreement talks about the use that's allowed by the city. And we do use it for, um, some meetings. Um, for example, the last two board meetings we had, um, set up for, uh, Zoom participation from the public. Um, and then I know the police does a lot of training there and some things like that. Um, but the agreement also allows for us to, um, rent that out to third parties. So I provided some information kind of on the history of those rentals and what we have in the budget, uh, for the fiscal year twenty budget. So, um, in total, um, the city receives about twenty-one hundred dollars in revenue from those rentals and we pay about ninety-one hundred dollars in operating expenses. So, um, that seven thousand dollar difference, um, is actually just part of our general fund. Um, funded through kind of those general revenues. So property tax, sales tax, use tax, those are so in, uh, I want to have a short-term discussion with the board as we're getting ready for the fiscal year twenty-one budget. Um, I would like to ask the board for their feedback on, um, is the goal of the senior center for us to not have to spend property tax, sales tax dollars to support it? Do we want the senior center to be self-supporting? And if we do, um, I would like some feedback on should we look at increasing the rental fee so that we can generate more revenue? Um, how aggressive do we want to be on perhaps promoting the senior center as an available rental space? Um, the agreement allows by direction of the board that we can allow for the, um, uh, consumption and possession of alcohol in that building, but we, we never have. Does the board want to open it up for that? For an additional, an additional rental fee amount? Um, does the board want to take either of those two expenses that I identified and either um, kind of strip those down to where we're not providing more than what we're required to do? Um, and then the other piece of this is, is does the board direct us to, if the senior center is um, operating with some general fund revenue, based on some general fund revenues with those property taxes and sales taxes? Um, is use by the, uh, Parks and Recreation Department for recreational type programming? And our meetings and things like that, do we want to put a value on those types of things that we would consider in that break-even estimation? So I know there's a lot of questions there, but, um, what kind of feedback can you guys give me on what, what to do looking forward to the twenty-one budget?
So I've got two things real quick. Renting courtyard park for a private event is two hundred dollars, right?
That's correct.
I mean, it's an indoor facility with HVAC and a bathroom. It should be at least what the courtyard is. Uh, second, if the agreement is they pay for those other things, they should be paying for those other things.
Okay, I appreciate that.
I saw some, uh,
And I think we can waive the past due rent.
All seven dollars of it or whatever it is?
We'll take that out of your paycheck, Dan.
Yeah, you got it.
Yes, Daniel Doggo for it.
I had, uh, I saw some verbiage in there. It was, uh, that it's never rented on a Saturday and a Sunday or something like that. It seems like it needs to be more available.
I agree with you.
It needs to be, I mean, I, I have a problem saying no, uh, when it comes to my event space. Uh, we're doing things and it seems like the way that, that some of that is written needs to be rewritten and, and say more of a yes to, um, rentals. I don't know if the price needs to go all the way up to two hundred. Um, my event space is much smaller. It's fifty dollars a day. Maybe a hundred dollars. But I think that needs to be more acceptable to getting people in there for their events.
Yeah, and I, I, I think we look at the base rate and then that additional hourly fee because and you could also rent your space three times in one day if you needed to, right? I mean, if somebody wanted to do an early morning meeting, a lunch and a dinner, you could clean it and flip it and get it ready.
Uh, we have a problem with doing more than two events in a day. You have, uh, sometimes things run a little bit longer than they should. Uh, they're kind of captured. Um, if, if they say they're gonna be there at five, they need to be there a little bit early to, to, to set up and things like that. So you, you have to add and subtract time, um, before an event and after event for cleanup. And sometimes it does, it's hard to do more than two events a day and whoever's, hopefully it's somebody that, uh, that you can communicate with effectively that's uh, that you say, hey, we, we have another event coming in an hour after you're supposed to leave. So I need to make sure that you're out of there without coming off as unaccepting to them coming in, so.
Right, right, right now, our current policy is once a week.
Yeah, that's something else. It needs to be, um, other than what the, the Xed out time for the senior, senior groups that come in there. It needs to be available much, much more. Um, it needs to be much more available. It's, it's way too kind of.
So what you're telling us is from your experience of renting your space is there is a need in the community for space availability downtown for events?
Low, low cost spaces available. Um, there's, there's not much space available um, in the downtown area for, for people to meet. It'd be a great opportunity for the city to, to break even on this, this facility if it was available.
So is this, is the senior center currently managed like we manage uh, all the other parks and rec facilities or is it managed separately by a different department?
It's currently managed by city hall staff.
I mean, oh, there we go. I know, I've been pushing the bar over here. Um, one conversation that Matt and I have had and, and we've had a couple of discussions internally with um, his promotion to Parks and Recreation Director and bringing on Brittany Probst in the Recreation Manager position. She's already reached out to the senior community uh, and is looking at um, some additional class opportunities for them in that facility and providing some assistance to them. Um, I think that um, hearing some of the discussion that the board has had, um, this is something that we could definitely look at. Perhaps some transition away from city hall management on this and that being, this being something that becomes more managed from the rental perspective. I think the fact that we also have park staff who could assist with cleaning in the facility and making it available for multiple rentals in a weekend. And increase the programming there. We have some significant opportunities that we could explore there and bring that forward. Um, I don't know, Matt, if you have anything to, to add there in our conversation yesterday, I think was, was along these lines.
Yeah, I, I know Alderman Chevalier brought it up again last night and I've heard others as well, but I think we start transitioning it more to a Parks and Rec managed community type center instead of just a senior center. If we're gonna pay utilities and we're gonna manage the rentals and manage the cleaning and we work with the seniors on when they truly need it, we got to make sure they're getting programming out of it. I know Clay County Senior Services has told me they're um, not extremely happy with the way things have gone with the senior center. They'd like to see more programming, like to see more use of it for educational purposes and not just hanging out, so.
Yeah, and Mayor, if I could, that uh, grant that Brittany applied for was through the Clay County Senior Services for seventy-five hundred to help cover the cost of instructors and equipment for fitness classes.
One of the things I would like to see is us look at the hours that it's actually available. You know, do the seniors fully need it for that block that they have? It's a pretty wide block. It takes the bulk of the day. You know, could we make it available to the community earlier in the afternoon and, you know, have more programming that's, you know, for our youth who are, you know, needing after-school activities and, you know, do some things for them that, that would really truly tie things in.
Yeah, one of the other things I'd like to bring up on this, uh, and Matt can probably help me with the numbers, but I think Clay County's got the fastest growing four H program. Thanks to some great work by our extension. Smithville has gone from like three kids to thirty or so. They feel I met a meeting in here before the room was renovated. Girl Scouts, uh, Boy Scouts, they always struggle finding places to meet because some of the other places they had met in the past have changed policies. Uh, the library now charges a pretty high fee for their room. We paid it, right, Nikki, when we did our community set?
Yep.
Yeah, so maybe for groups like that, we can work on more of a, if they're meeting in every other, or the third Wednesday of every month, we can get them kind of a yearly rate. And I think letting Matt handle that is a great place for it to go.
Right, I'd step back in on this. I've donated my room to all ci- all city or all community groups um, for free. To make sure that there is a place that they can meet, four H included. I've had a couple of meetings with, with them there, uh, Lions Club, uh, what's the other one?
Jacoanis.
Jacoanis. Um, the Smithville networking groups, any community group that needs a, a place to go that doesn't, of course, exceed my, my occupancy is, has always been able to come meet for free. Uh, so we have to probably think about those lines too, where there's not necessarily a rental whenever it comes to a community organized group.
Yeah, and on situations like that, just like other things that go through Parks and Rec, if there's a need, they can, they can apply for a scholarship type thing or reduction in fees or, or whatever is needed. But we also don't want to impact businesses that would be able to host them and have, make money off of uh, food and beverages, right?
Well, I'm not, I'm not necessarily looking at it in that perspective, but yeah.
Right, but I have to, I have a number of restaurant owners that could potentially uh, be impacted by that if we just open it up for free and allow food and alcohol, BYOB and stuff like that, so.
True.
So as it relates to the increased free, um, I haven't heard any conversation about the allowance of alcohol. Is that off the table?
What do we charge on the square for alcohol permit?
Um, I do not know that off the top of my head.
Alcohol permit fee and security.
Twenty-five bucks or something like that or fifty, I don't know. Yeah, and then we get into the, you know, the discussion of security, which I mean, we're next door, but still.
Well, I mean, anytime you rent a, rent uh, most places that are self-standing require security if you're gonna have alcohol.
Yeah.
At least somebody in the parking lot makes sure that doesn't get out of hand.
Or a good damage deposit.
Matt, you're shoveling sidewalks, right? We're good on that one?
That's right.
Uh, Matt, do you have any concerns?
No, I think we went over most of them with Cynthia and Dan about trying to figure out the best way to uh, make sure it's clean. And hopefully, you know, when they put that deposit down, um, they do a good job of cleaning back out that way. It wouldn't be a, a too hard of a job for staff to come in and, and do a deep clean or just do a good uh, run-through to make sure things back to normal, so.
Yeah, I, I think that we start holding that deposit to a higher standard when it comes to cleanliness. You return it to the way you, you had it. You may have to have some conversations with the seniors on their, their coffee mugs. So they don't get any damage. Maybe put those in the, the locker room or whatever. Um, but anyway.
Okay, I appreciate the direction there. We will uh, get together as some staff and, and look at what we can do. Um, there's one other piece of this conversation and it's the long-term conversation of the senior center. And this is not something that I'm looking for maybe an answer on today, but um, if you guys can do some thinking and maybe give us some direction on what, which way you'd like us to go in the future. That would be great. So the current term of the senior center lease, it expires in August of twenty twenty-three. Anytime prior to August of twenty twenty-two, the uh, senior center non-for-profit can express interest in extending that agreement for an additional five-year period. And the agreement doesn't really lay out any way that the city would potentially say no to that. So if they request it, um, they get an additional five-year term. And the agreement also does not have a cap on how many times, times they can request that. So it could just keep going and going and going. So um, staff is looking for some direction. Again, not necessarily today, but long-term, do we want to um, just allow that to keep happening? And let them come back and, and make another request, extend it five years? And they make another request, extend it five years on the same terms? Do we want to try to be proactive and approach them about maybe renegotiating some of the terms in the contract? To make it, um, I don't know, make, make more sense for both parties? Or I guess the third option would be, does the board want us to approach the uh, senior center non-for-profit group about potentially getting out of the contract in its entirety and either allowing them full use of the, of the building and, and kind of washing our hands a bit? Or uh, maybe even, maybe even donating the land to them or something like that. So just maybe some ideas on kind of long-term, where do we want that to go? And, and maybe I think after hearing some discussion about utilizing it for recreation purposes, um, that third option might not be a, a one that we want to pursue by any means.
Alderman Atkins. You're muted, Mark.
Now, can you hear me? With, with the way things are going right now, um, and, and uh, society changing and demographics change around us. If we could say maybe a, a renewal every two years, keep all of our options open, not let them be able to or anybody else could just go in and automatically take over and, and take advantage or to their benefit of a five-year term. You know, every two-year renewable sounds pretty decent as far as a company contract would go.
Yeah, honestly, I'd rather see how this goes the next six months with Parks and Rec taking it on and have a discussion uh, on long-term direction at our board retreat in the spring. But yeah, I agree, a shorter lease and, you know, make sure we're adhering to terms and things like that. And maybe even not lease to, you know, and, and turn it into with programming for all ages. And out back, we'll put a, a three-foot deep above-ground pool for John. All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Alderman Atkins second, anybody?
Second.
Alderman Chevalier second. So all those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. We stand adjourned just to uh, call to order the next meeting. I want to give everybody a two-minute, three-minute break. We'll start at seven oh five.